Okay, we are back in session. It is 8:35. Roll call, please.
Mayor Manna?
Here.
Thomas Welsh?
Here.
Captain Ballard?
Here.
Damon Cuso?
Here.
Guy Morata?
Here.
Lou Demento?
Here.
Barbara Boas?
Yeah.
Art Murphy?
Yeah.
Juanita Lubis?
Here.
Mazem Yaxton?
Here.
Michael Terry?
Dave Castiel?
Here.
Let the record know that Ms. Lewis isn't out with us. We have some ordinances. Okay. No, we're good. It's fine. Okay, first up, we have ordinance to the Borough of Red Bank, redevelopment plan for the property identified in the borough's tax maps as blocks 3, 201, 401, 6, 701, and 901.
Can I go ahead and just pronounce the proposed ordinances?
Yes.
You need to introduce yourself, please.
Sure.
My name is Chris Dockney, and I'm a professional planner with CME Associates. We're based in Portland and Howell. However, I work out of the Camden office.
Sorry, what's your name?
Dockney, D-O-C-H-N-E-Y.
Why don't you start getting into it? I have a script called "Truthful Pressing" by the way.
Yes, I do. I'll try and speak into the microphone here. So what we have here is a redevelopment plan for the lots depicted on the exhibit to the right. It is all Block 3. It's lots 9.01, 4.01, 6, 7.01, and 2.01. More commonly referred to probably as the VNA site, which is the former home of the Visiting Nurses Association on the corner of Riverside Avenue, Highway 35, and Bodmin Place.
Chris, can you just turn that a little more sideways so the public can see? Ladies and gentlemen, if you can't see from the back, you're welcome to come up on the side or sit at the table on this side so that you can see better.
Trying to aim so that everyone could see it a little bit. I don't know how well you guys can still see it, but if it's this way, is it okay that way? All right, this...
We had in our packet also.
...northern peninsula of the borough. It includes everything on that peninsula, with the exception of sort of the immediate...
Chris, you gotta use one of the mics if you're gonna stand.
I'll just sit so you can see that.
You're not growing anymore?
I'm sorry?
You're not growing anymore? Is that what you're saying?
I think I'm done.
Okay.
It's been about 16 years since I've grown, although my grandmother shrank, so she thinks that I grew a little.
Yeah, we all get to that stage, yeah.
Relatively speaking, I may or may not be growing, depending on your perspective, I guess. Okay.
So what we have here, this is a proposed ordinance, essentially. This is a redevelopment plan for these properties. And this has been referred to you by the Borough Council, as is required for all land use laws. They require that you review all redevelopment plans, land use ordinances, anything along those lines, to ensure that it is consistent with the master plan and make a recommendation ultimately to them on whether or not you feel that it is appropriate to be adopted. And this is a redevelopment plan. I think I first need to clarify that this is not an area in need of redevelopment. Typically, a redevelopment plan means that it's associated with an area in need of redevelopment or that previously been designated as a blighted area. And this is not the case here. I guess it was about a year and a half ago. It would have had to come before this board. I did not have anything to do with the study myself. But the borough designated this area, and I think a few more areas in the surroundings, as an area in need of rehabilitation, which essentially means that this was found to be either the homes in the area and/or the infrastructure in the area was more than 50 years old and could benefit from a substantial program of rehabilitation. So that happened in July of 2017, I believe, is when this board recommended that the Borough Council designate the area. So that's already happened. And then in order to effectuate a rehabilitation area, you then have to go forward with a redevelopment plan. Even though it's not a redevelopment area, the plan for both a rehab area or a redevelopment area is still called a redevelopment plan. And there are two distinctions essentially between redevelopment and rehabilitation that I think I should probably state on the record here. With rehabilitation, which is what this is, there is no possible use of eminent domain. So the borough does not have the authority to go in and take this property if they wanted to. The other is redevelopment allows for long-term tax abatements, whereas rehabilitation only allows for short-term tax abatements. So this is rehabilitation. So there is no 20-year tax abatements. There is a potential for a five-year tax abatment on a redeveloper of this property in the future. Those are the primary distinctions. And beyond that, it's no different from a redevelopment area plan where this is essentially a new land use ordinance specific just to these properties. That being said, I'll go into what we are proposing is the new land use ordinance for these properties. Okay, so this, like I said, is just like any other land use ordinance or zoning ordinance, essentially. We are proposing that you permit only the following on these properties: multifamily dwellings and apartments, professional and administrative offices, common open space areas, and any other use which is substantially similar to those. Adult uses, boarding houses, storage, drive-throughs, fast food, gas stations, junkyards, those sorts of things will all be prohibited on this site. And as a conditional use, we would be permitting primary food service establishments or retail food establishments. So essentially restaurants or cafes will be permitted, but only if they are less than 2,500 square feet. So a small cafe or some sort of small food use will be permitted there. And public parking facilities would also be permitted. Generally, accessory uses are permitted, those who would be typically associated with an office building or with a apartment building. We are proposing, this also has its own bulk standards, so the, you know, front yard setbacks, rear yard building height, kind of stuff. We're proposing a front yard setback of nine feet. And the bulk of this site being having three streets which have frontage on it, that would be from all three of these streets, there would be a minimum setback of nine feet. The side yard lots would be zero feet from most of the sides, depending on how this could potentially be divided up for development, or 20 feet away from Lot 1.01, which is the lot immediately to the north of this property. So any development on this would have to be set back at least 20 feet from the office building right on the river. The maximum building height we're proposing is six stories or 65 feet. So you are allowing a bit of a taller building. Building coverage would be allowed up to 77 percent. And the impervious coverage would be up to 90 percent, which is pretty close to the current conditions on that property, where it's mostly covered in buildings and parking. We do have a set of standards that differs a little bit from your current apartment requirements of the size of a apartment unit. They're saying a studio unit could be a minimum or has to be a minimum of 500 square feet. One-bedroom, 600. Two-bedroom would be a minimum of 1,000 square feet. And a three-bedroom would have to be at least 1,150, which is varied by about 50 to 100 square feet from your current standards. We are also requiring that any application for redevelopment have to include a publicly accessible outdoor plaza to create a little bit of a public space on this property. Since we are allowing the building to be a little bit taller than some of the things in the area, we are requiring that all portions of a building which would be above a fourth story have to be set back 10 feet. And the purpose for that is so that the sort of scale and the massing of the building doesn't really dominate the site and gets pulled back a little bit so it's more reflective of a traditional urban character. Porches and stoops would be allowed to approach within that front yard setback, but only if they are... If they maintain a sidewalk in front of them of at least five feet. Let's see, bang windows and other things. And balconies are allowed to approach into the front yard setback as long as they are at least 12 feet above the sidewalk grade, so there's no issue with people bumping into them. Okay. We do have parking standards where we require for any kind of non-residential use, such as an office, one space for 350 square feet of gross floor area. So that's a pretty common parking requirement for an office. We have broken down the parking requirements for the residential uses, whereas a studio or one-bedroom unit will be required to provide one parking space. A two-bedroom unit would be 1.7. And a three-bedroom unit would be two spaces per unit. So there's an escalating parking requirement based on the number of bedrooms you would have. We are permitting that for any non-residential use, that up to 50 percent of their required parking could be satisfied by on-street parking. And that is if a developer proposes to do that. They have to provide you with a study showing that the on-street parking is both there and available during peak hours. So as to limit the amount of driveways and curb cuts on 35 Riverside Avenue for traffic control, we require that any access to a parking garage or parking lot on this property come only from Bodmin Place. And we also would require, already required of your ordinance anyway, I believe, but anybody proposing redevelopment on the site would have to provide a traffic impact statement which addresses all current conditions and how they will impact both traffic and parking. Sorry, I just overwashed my mind. We are permitting, the maximum density we are permitting on the site would be 70 units an acre, which is a bit more dense than is currently permitted by the ordinance and is a little bit more than is what's found on sites in the area. And we are also allowing it to go a little bit higher under certain conditions. We have on page... on page 10 here in your packet, if you're following along with me. A developer would be allowed density bonuses if they meet certain standards. So it's essentially a thought here is if they provide a better product, they're allowed to do a little bit more. And most of those are sort of green building standards. If they do a green roof, if they do solar panels, if they do a wind energy system, if they can show that the building has been designed to use passive solar heating, if they incorporate a gray water recycling system into the building or a rain garden to the stormwater management system, they would be allowed for each one of those up to five additional units an acre, up to a maximum of 20 additional units per acre. So they couldn't claim credit for anywhere below four of these.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes, you can.
Solar panels, wind energy, there's no minimum number of those that need to be included to get the density bonus. Why not?
We have considered some of that. It's hard to put a number on solar panels without going into a...
So you could put one up and get five extra units? That's the way it reads? Am I right? Am I wrong?
No, I think you are correct there. In all practical matters, I'm not sure that it would make any sense for a developer to put a single solar panel up. I think, solar panel, excuse me, not panel. I think if they were going to do it, they would do it at least enough to provide some energy to the building more than just a token amount.
But we're not requiring them to do more than 10.
No, but certainly I can take a little bit of research on my part to see.
I mean, for that and the wind, you're not gonna see a wind farm up here.
Yeah, so I should hope I wasn't even...
The wind should probably come out.
I have seen some small, maybe not on buildings quite of this size, but small wind energy systems on top of something like that. Probably are. Mostly in San Francisco and New York.
This is Red Bank.
If you guys want it out, I can take it out.
Yeah, I just don't think it's gonna fit on the site, you know, knowing, you know, what it takes to put up a wind farm or a wind energy collector.
And as far as the solar goes, whether it's the lighting, the panels, or the solar passive heating, I think there needs to be some minimum quantity used there.
Can you use the word "substantial"?
I'm sorry?
Can you put the word "substantial" in, put in as well as a substantial amount of...
I can include that word, sure.
Yeah, use the word "substantial", so that we'll have some control over the number of cars.
Can I ask a question because I'm not very versed in this kind of particular give and take? What's the correlation between having a solar panel and then being allowed to have additional apartments per acre?
Well, there isn't necessarily a direct correlation between the solar doing more for more units. It is a... This is sort of the density is really your only leverage to get some of the things that you might want to see in a building, which would be a greater, more sustainable building. And this is sort of the...
So you negate that by adding more traffic and more people?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah, how about you get to do those things and we'll let you build the building?
I think the statement is that the building, if one is going to be built, should have accreditation with respect to a LEED type of building. So why don't we just leave it at that? Let the negotiation phase, if there is going to be a proposal, take place at that point.
We could possibly do that. We do have, in here, that is one of the standards that they demonstrate that they meet LEED standards. I don't know if I want to require that they actually get LEED accreditation, because that is a very expensive process.
No, you're not, we're not saying that. We're saying, why don't you just leave it as broad-reading as that? And that would require whether or not somebody wants to do it. It's a trade-off. Instead of saying that, as the chairman said, you know, if you put a solar panels, you get X amount of bonus right off the bat.
I mean, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. And if you want to hear anything even more silly, number nine is if you put a bike rack, you get three more units. I mean, you know, I mean, that's... This is why I had fun with this today at lunch. You know, that's another one. I mean, I think you should provide parking for bicycles. Absolutely should. But, you know, extra units based on a bike rack. Again, if you want that, I think when the time comes, come and we'll talk about that.
Should be a site plan issue.
Yeah, I don't think it belongs in this.
I can certainly remove that from my density bonus and if that's what you want to see, I can make that just a requirement.
As the chairman says, that's really a site plan issue where the board says, you know, this is what we really want to see. And let's talk about it to see if it can be done. Can't be done, can be done. But, yeah, I'd be there to sort of fix it.
It seems to me that we're already giving you, that we agree with this, a density bonus, because we've increased from the rest of the town, your density. I totally guess all of these tit-for-tat kind of bonuses. And I want to see you figure out some way to enhance people to come in without getting these little gold stars. Now, I don't... It's already too dense. And then you're allowed them because they're putting a solar panel up or a bicycle back up.
All 12 of these. I love the public art one, too, which you should have anyway. All of these should be done in site plan. I don't think there should be any density bonuses in this plan.
I've been arguing that for a long time, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, you know, the public art, you should do public art. You shouldn't get five more units. You should get the building in the first place. So let's move on to the design standard part.
That's what we have done here for the design standards. We would require, essentially, since with the density in building, we would be permitting a substantially larger building than might be found elsewhere in the borough, some kind of substantial design standards to ensure that the quality of the product that is produced eventually by a developer is of a pretty high standard. So that you don't get a big, blank, ugly building. There's some general standards that are more just, you know, statements of intent and aren't necessarily standards that you can specifically meet. They're not measurable standards. Things like, you should avoid a big, blank, featureless wall. The building should be visually interesting. It should be attractive. And then further beyond that are the architectural design standards that are a little bit more measurable. Where it would be, if you meet the standards, then that's good, of course. If you do not meet these standards, it would specifically require a design paper from the board. Buildings should be oriented so that their primary entrance faces the public streets. You don't have a building that's sort of internally focused on its own parking lot and presents the back end of the building towards the public street. Building walls, the exterior should primarily be brick or stone, wood, stucco, metal, and glass of similar quality materials so you don't get something that's, you know, like an Ephesus, that is pretty cheap materials. There should be consistent quality and finish on all sides of the building that you can see from a public street. Where a blank or featureless wall is unavoidable, you should have it decorated in some fashion. And that's where it's... They'd have to demonstrate that it is unavoidable before they just put a blank wall and stuck a mural on it. We have done, as sort of came up in the last application, your current ordinance, I believe, what was stated is you require any building that's more than 175 feet of any one facade to be sort of broken up, or that's the maximum length permitted. And this, any building that is a facade of over 100 feet should be designed to be separated into vertical segments rather than long walls.
And that's one of the major reasons why earlier this year the council took the step of retaining a separate architectural framework with prices on any of these major development projects in terms of the site specifications that then would have an interface with the developer to make sure that those things are done. So we do have that on board now.
All right, I'll just continue then. General idea here is just so you don't get a big, ugly building. But I don't know if you want me to continue through with every single standard?
No, those are pretty...
Red, I think.
Yeah, those are hard to...
No, no. Okay.
Again, all of this, if we go ahead with it, will be subject to vetting and discussion, as well as either approval or disapproval at any application before it's to the design standards.
That is correct, yes. Just to point out, the purpose of having standards written in the plan is so that there is something to go to. Obviously, any application has to come before this board. But this gives you something to point at and say, well, our plan says you have to do this and didn't do that. It gives you something to go back to, to request something of a developer, rather than just being, they show you a picture of a building, and you say, well, I don't like it, I do like it, and then go back and forth. There is standards that they have to meet, and there are potentially consequences that they don't meet them. So there are also the commercial design standards for the event that maybe they put into a cafe. We would permit outdoor dining in front of any sort of restaurant if it was to look good on the site. There are specific standards for landscapes, fences, street trees, and garden walls and such. Circulation design standards that require minimum sizes for sidewalks, and look at sidewalks we provided. We require that all mechanical equipment, if they make as good an effort as possible to hide it and conceal it, so that they're not putting... Potentially, you have a multifamily building. I've seen this happen, where you will have, say, 100 apartments in a building, and then you get 100 gas meters straight in the front of the building. So you're not putting something like that to happen.
Obviously, you've dealt with New Jersey Natural Gas in our downtown. We fought them up with the appellate division, and we lost.
I have dealt with them in other towns, but not here. And then there are also the...
What I've said is that we try to avoid those. We actually went to court to try to avoid it in the downtown, but we lost.
I did deal with one, a redevelopment up in Harrison where they put those 245 gas meters in one big wall was right along with the main streets. And that's why I'm specifically trying to include standards like this. But then, moving on. There's some standards. And a brief statement that all light should be provided, of course, with your ordinance. Now, I'll move on. Part of the reason that we come here is, as I said initially, this is a referral from the council. The law requires you review this in terms of its consistency with your master plan. And a few things I pulled up from your master plan. You asked, adopted a master plan in '95, and then you have adopted reexamination reports in 2002, 2008, and 2009, I believe, is your most recent. A couple of the goals in the master plan that was reiterated in the reexamination reports is a goal to develop a higher-density mixed-use centers that accommodate the varied housing types, employment, retail, and support services, and the use of alternative modes of transportation. And as a part of the larger goal of expanding the commercial space, the downtown should grow and thrive. Development should be encouraged. Historic structures in areas should be protected, and a true mix of uses that includes a variety of residences should occur. So I think what we are proposing here is generally consistent with your master plan. This sets forth some standards to facilitate the construction of larger, mixed-use buildings, potentially. A redevelopment plan is also required to report on the consistency with the planning and zoning of contiguous municipalities. This, you're separated from Middletown by Navisync Rivers. We don't think this will have much of an impact on anything in Middletown, nor will it have any impact on Fair Haven, Little Silver, Shrewsbury, or Tidham Falls. This is generally consistent with the state development redevelopment plan, which does sort of encourage growth on a larger scale within metropolitan and suburban planning areas, which the entire Borough of Red Bank is located in. The rest of this, I don't know if you need me to go through this kind of boilerplate requirements for any redevelopment plan, approve as the authority to approve things, and the site plan application process.
That was one of my questions. I made a note here that... No building permits needed for any changes on the property. I did not reference what section I wrote that from.
I know exactly what you're talking about. I think it's planning order review process.
Imagine how we would like that not to be spreaded.
Just so I'm clear that we're on the same page. We're talking about on page 23, the very first bullet point? No building or zoning permit shall be issued by the construction or zoning official for any work resulting in a change of intensity of development or change of use for any properties or building of the area for redevelopment plan without prior review and approval of the work.
Okay. It's not that one.
Regular maintenance and minor repairs shall not require planning or review approval or any change of tenancy or site alteration is proposed which would not require subdivision or site plan approval as per the Borough's Planning and Development Regulations, or would not result in a change in the intensity of the development reviewed the proposed change by the planning board shall not be required.
He misread it.
Okay.
He was... I explained to the chairman that is a change of tenancy in that standard. In other words, a tenant changes, you don't leave as long as still tenancy.
And my last note was that there was no irrigation required for any plantings on the property?
Honestly, that's not something I consider. I can certainly add that.
Oh, no, I want you to take it out. I wouldn't have written it down if it wasn't in there. I didn't make that up at lunchtime today. I think I read that there's no irrigation required for plantings.
Well, I think this is a general proposition. If you want a property included, then leave it as a site plan issue, right?
Yeah, I would just take the comment out that it's not required, and we'll deal with it at site plan. But I don't want it to be in here that it's not required. I didn't write down where.
What did you have for lunch?
I wrote a piece of crap.
I'm checking this document. I'll see what you're...
I didn't make that up.
I'm gonna be honest, I don't know where that is in your...
Okay. While we're continuing, I'm gonna find that.
Okay, if you'd certainly let me know where that is. That's not in the landscaping standards, as far as...
In the meantime, does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. Dockney?
I have a couple. How did you come... This seems really dense. How did you get to the maximum building coverage of 77 percent? This is a large site. Why are we covering it so densely?
I believe the 77 percent is pretty much what is currently on the property between the parking lots and the buildings. I think we more or less kept it at the existing conditions.
Second question was, we did address all those density bonuses, and I appreciate the anticipation and striking them all. But why are we... We're at the Navisync. We're right. We're having issues with water. We're discussing our water quality. We're on land. Why are we making it optional for green development? Why are we not cementing in where we have a potentially great gateway development? That they should have green standards. These should not be optional. These should be implemented. There should not be any debate about this. And I agree, we need to rehab this area. The entrance to town for Middletown, it's not just like that we like. And now we have an opportunity. But in a trade-off for some of this density, it should just be mandatory in this provision for us to have green building. And we should be taking the Navisync into great consideration in this. And that's more a statement than a question.
I have a question. In the beginning, you skimmed over very quickly the parking issue. You mentioned on-street parking. Have you ever been there?
No, I have. That was mentioned at the council meeting. But the only requirement is that this plan... is that this plan says, if I read it correctly, that for the non-residential space, which essentially might be a little cafe, if there is a parking requirement for that cafe, 50% of that can be addressed on-street only if it can be proven that there's adequacy of parking on-street, on Bodman Place. I can assure you that there is no adequacy of parking on Bodman Place. At any time, I look out my window every day, so I don't even know why that's in there because it's not gonna work.
That's making sense.
It's in there so that they have the opportunity to try and make their case. If a developer wants to do that for a small cafe, they have the opportunity to try and make the case. I don't wanna make that case, I have been there, I know parking is very limited, and I think there's maybe 20, 20 some odd spaces on Bodman Place, and I'm sure that's used by the residents of the apartments on the river.
No. No, the residents are not the ones that are harking up the space, it's the Oyster Point. And they have plenty of parking at the Molly Pitcher because they own the same property, but they don't wanna walk through that extra bump of water.
Can you just cover for the board affordable housing as a place of.
This, as a general statement, that anything built here would not do to the base, so we have gone back and forth on this question. This requires any redevelopment shall provide for an affordable housing component so as to contribute to the borough's constitutional fair share obligation through any lawful mechanism recognized by the Fair Housing Act, and the council wants affordable housing and information regulations. Sorry. Essentially, they will have to require or comply with your ordinance. The same as the last project that was presented before you, whatever is your ordinance, depends on the books at the time of application, they would have to comply with it. Whether that's your current ordinance of the 11% boroughwide or 20%, which is what this site falls under, is that 20% requirement? Or whatever the new ordinance is adopted whenever you get.
Well, we are in negotiation with the board as far as the special masters, comprehensive review of all municipalities, and that's why Leslie is representing us in that, there's adaptive participation by all parties in that. So that's why the language is whatever the ordinance says, because we are in agreement with everybody and we're trying to all strike a similar ordinance. So my concern, it's not a question, it's more an impact that you're, because you talked about being back to Middletown and Little Silver and Fairhaven, but that small little enclave, you need to redbank, and there are unique issues currently there. And I'm worried that the expanded building, the more parking, the more parking, the restaurants, cafes, and putting that traffic and that kind of, you know, density in that small enclave is gonna be very problematic, especially for the people who live there and already have problems. So that's my biggest concern about it. It's big, it's sprawling, and it's gonna exacerbate an already very bad situation.
Does anyone from the public have any questions for Mr. Docking? One at a time, come on up. You can sit down over here and use this microphone so we get you on the rest.
Do you wanna raise your hand? Swear it out, truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Tell us who you are.
Ms. Dan, it's Call Me 25 Cedar Street. I first just wanna thank the board, there's a lot of you who have made comments, as I heard this gentleman speak, Barbara, we hear through comments, totally right on, Mr. Chair, it was kind of funny talking about the bonus density, I almost fell out of my chair. However, I just wanted to make a note that, and Mr. Ballard kind of hit on it, I actually have a fellow library board trustee who was recently, in the last two months, got into an accident trying to turn out of that street. So beyond parking, which is, obviously we all understand the issue there, is also, I know, and to Mr. Mayor, your point in the past, you've talked about having a light there. Now adding all this, isn't it kind of the cart before the horse? I mean, that turn is very vicious. Now adding the density that is possibly proposed here, you're gonna have a lot of people turning in and out of that street, and that too is gonna be an issue. So that is definitely a safety concern for everybody who goes down there. And if I recall, going to a lot of meetings in town, I think it was last year or the year before, there was actually a, the way they lined the street up, they added, one extra spot was a touchdown on Bodman, on that street. The residents were happy just by adding one extra spot, and now we wanna potentially have this high-density structure here with obviously more parking, there's, you're the problem. My other concern is if they do get waivers for additional resident units, and to your point, you said it's a gradual increase, whether loft or one-bedroom, and then two-bedrooms, 1.7 spots, and then two spots for three, at some point, you're gonna add up. It's gonna definitely add up because you're gonna have visitors, you're gonna have people that probably will have cars, especially over there. So I'm actually very happy that this board has addressed a lot of the concerns just by sitting there listening to the proposals. So I thank you for really speaking for the residents, but I really also wanna bring up the issue of the turn, and make sure that's also in the back of your mind.
I've been speaking about that turn for 10 years. Not only that, but I've been lobbying for 10 years, and the past administration didn't even want to talk to me.
There you go.
The former state senator, I have to give her credit, she came on every meeting we have with DOT, but they didn't talk to her either.
In your walks, you took walks across showing you and Alan?
However, the inescapable reality is that there has to be a change in that intersection. We have a new administration, we have a new DOT commissioner, we have a governor who actually knows how difficult that intersection is, and who can see it from his window. I think that that, no matter what you do, and one of the reasons the VNA left is because, you know, basically didn't suit their purposes, but we have to enhance it, we have to go full-fledged and try to get some sort of enhancement with the traffic flow, no matter what happens on the site. But it's not something that, you know, just started, frankly, even if they didn't, if VNA never left, we still would have had that problem because we're not gonna stop until we get a resolution of that. Frankly, I don't think that even if we don't do anything with it, you're still gonna have that problem because you have the Oyster Point people. And if they have a function layer at the Oyster Point, the traffic gets backlog forever on Bodman Place. So DOT has to hopefully take a new look to it. What I understand is that the new owner of the property, unlike the previous owner of the property, is absolutely committed that if in fact there are approvals granted, they will be joining obviously in any DOT application to effectuate that. It's necessary and it's way overdue, frankly, it should have been put in when the Oyster Point was put in, and the office building, but it was not. And so it's gotta be addressed, whether or not anything is ever built there, it still has to be done. I happen to agree with you on one point that you raised with respect to the cafe. I, working on Bodman Place, I happen to think that a cafe would be extraordinary, because there, frankly, there is nothing there. And even if you wanna go to the Oyster Point, you know, I'm not sure that they want us to go in there unless you're staying there. It's just not very used that much by our residents. So I don't know if the proposed owner and proposed applicant here may even wanna do a cafe that impacts the parking so much. That's a trade-off at site plan, because parking requirements for commercial space, they have a lot more spaces than it would be for residential space. So that's something that is permitted, in reality, will it happen? I don't know. It may not be necessary.
A cafe could reduce traffic with all of the people that work down on Bodman Place to some cafes that are going somewhere else for lunch?
Well, yeah, there's no place to go for lunch.
No, right across the street at.
Biravino.
Biravino, right.
It's like playing a game of Frogger.
The only way to get the Biravino safely is to go through the light, cross the bridge, and then walk back on the other side of the bridge and cross the bridge.
Well, I agree with you, Mayor.
But it is close.
But just to your point is, I hope the DOT comes through, and I hope the light comes, but I just don't want us to be locked into a high density if this light doesn't come to fruition two, three years down the road. We don't know how long the state's gonna take, but I hope it comes sooner than later, just for safety for the people, I agree with you, that are there right now, so they can have more walking safely into town. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. And I just wanna reiterate, I'm totally for developing this area, it's in desperate need, that's a monolith that doesn't say redbank as you drive over the bridge, we need something there. I'm just not convinced that this density and exacerbating the situation is the right thing to do at this point in time. We desperately need a light. Yes.
Chris, I have one more comment, I haven't found the irrigation thing yet, but I did find another note that I made on page eight, number six. Why are we saying that no buffer areas are required between this development and adjacent lots or uses?
Well, that was essentially, there is a provision in your current ordinance, I forget exactly where it is off the top of my head, I'm gonna find.
Those require.
You said there's a buffer to the office building.
There's a side yard setback requirement to adjacent to the office building.
But that's it.
It's all property, it's our water and sewer easement, so that's open space. That's why there's no requirement.
Excellent. Someone else from the public, come on up.
I have questions and comments, do them both or just one?
Do them both, have a seat.
All right, actually, I wanna go to the map first.
You got, we have a very important question.
You swear it out, you swear it out, you swear it out, you swear it out, you swear it out.
I do. My name's Dan Reardon, 53 Elmer Place. So the questions that I have are about setbacks. So I can't tell from this map, but it looks like the sidewalk is not part of the lot, so on your side, are we talking about a nine-foot setback from the sidewalk?
Essentially, yes. I don't believe the sidewalk is just outside the property line and within the right of way, so for all intents and purposes, it would be from the inside edge of the sidewalk that the link would have to be set back a minimum of 9 feet.
And then on Bodman, there is no sidewalk, so the sidewalk would be part of the nine-foot setback?
Wherever the property line is, which there's a sidewalk on some portion of the bottom, I believe.
This side of Bodman there is, but on this side, there is, I think, just this little part right here, but this part doesn't have any sidewalk.
It would require them to go 9 feet back from the right of way, exactly where that line is, though those are not tax maps, that is, a GIS map, so it might be all five foot or two year there, it would require them to go 9 feet back and install a sidewalk.
So nine feet plus a five-foot sidewalk?
The five-foot sidewalk could be within the right of way.
Okay. All right. All right, so those are my only two questions about this, I can sit down for you.
And I'll let everyone know now that we're gonna limit any comments to five minutes. If anyone wants to go on longer than that after 10:00 PM, we'll have another meeting. I wake up at 4:00 every day.
I'll do my best to get into five minutes.
10:30 is my bedtime.
All right, so I wanted to, I wanted to comment on a couple of things that were said. One is that the density is slightly higher. The density is up to, it's, the density, allowed density is 16 units per acre for that lot. The density here is 70 to 90, it's not slightly higher, it's five or six times higher. So it's way higher. Same thing with the apartment size, the apartments aren't slightly smaller, the studios are half the size. They have to be 1,000 and only 500, one bedrooms are 600 instead of 1,000. So they're not slightly smaller, they're much smaller. So some, another comment, just in general, on the, one thing that was in the redevelopment plan, that we need massing there to represent redbank properly. And to me, redbank is not a massive town. We don't have massive buildings in our town, that's not our character. So to have a massive building at our gateway sets the wrong tone as people are coming to town, to the extent that buildings set tone. So I looked at the master plan, because I think that's what we're talking about, whether this fits into the master plan. And this plan, I don't think fits very well on any of the things, but specific to the WD zone, it fails, I think, in a couple of areas. One, there are five sort of goals that are stated in the master plan for the WD zone. One of them is the front and side yard setbacks should maintain the views to the river. This building eliminates side setbacks, reduces front setbacks by 82%, by 92% if there's a stoop or a sidewalk. So it essentially eliminates all sidewalks, which is completely contrary to the master The pedestrian access, well, there isn't enough, there isn't enough room for pedestrians right now on that lot, and they're gonna bring buildings all the way to the edge. There will be buildings four feet from the sidewalk. Sidewalk will be five feet budding up on the street, and then there'll be four feet of, well, zero to four feet, because if there's a stoop, it'll be zero. There'll be zero to four feet of space beyond it, and then a six-story building. So, let's see, okay. Then there's a separate section in the master plan that talks about pedestrian issues. So, and it has goals like improvements to the public landscape, such as tree-lined sidewalks, pedestrian-scale streetlight. So these sort of things are essential to the major walking street. Riverside Avenue is mentioned in the master plan as a major walking street, but there is no way to put street trees in here because you have five feet, then four feet, then building. You've got four foot to put trees in. The curb here is already, the sidewalk here is already against the curb. There's no set-off for safety and, I don't know, sort of walkability. So to put a building right up against the sidewalk. It also says the use of bicycles should be encouraged, therefore, certain key streets should be striped for bike ways along their roads. This is identified as, Riverside is again identified as a key street. There is zero bicycle lane, zero shoulder at that spot. So we have an opportunity to convert the sidewalk on Riverside into a bike lane, and then to put a couple of feet of street trees, you need four feet for street trees, and then five feet of, five feet of sidewalk, and then two feet, three feet, four feet clearance so that people aren't up against the building, and then the building can come up. But that requires a setback of, let's see, four, nine, say 15 feet. You know, the requirement in this zone is 50 feet. I don't think that asking for a 15-foot setback is a hardship. We're asking them to have a third of the setback that is required in the zone. Okay, and then finally, in the traffic section of the master plan, it again talks about minor improvements to street alignment and improvements in terms of sidewalks and street trees would enhance the character of the streets. So we need to get some street trees in there. To do that, we need to have some space between the curb and the sidewalk. We don't have that now, and under this plan, we won't get it, and once this building's built, we'll never get it. This is our chance for the next 50 years to have that piece of Riverside be useful to pedestrians and cyclists. Now it isn't, and it won't be. So I think we should increase the front setback significantly. But in general, I think this, this development doesn't fit the master plan very well in terms of traffic, in terms of pedestrian issues, in terms of visibility to the river, the height limits, I could live with the height limit, it's, you know, much higher than the surrounding, what do they say, site height limits compatible with adjacent areas of downtown, it's, you know, it's much higher than across the street, but compatible with some other areas next to it.
Dan, is it, again, just a question, but Colony House is much higher than six stories.
Right.
And Grantville is higher than six stories.
Which one's Grantville?
Grantville is on more of a place across the street, and River View Tower is 15 stories, and the atrium right down the street is eight stories.
That's why I said.
So the other thing that I would caution you, I completely follow you, and I don't take umbrage with your comments, I respect your comments and appreciate the dialogue, but because this is not. I respect your comments and appreciate the dialogue, but because this is not flat land, when anyone is talking about six stories, the question is at what level? Because the lower part of the property by the borough-owned property has got to be a full, I think, two stories lower than the top of the property between Bodman Place and Riverside Avenue. So we haven't seen the plan, but I wouldn't automatically think that six stories is at the crest of the hill, but it is a sloping property, and I would venture to say that part of the property is going to be built from the bottom up. And so from the bottom at the foot of the hill, it would probably be six stories up. But in terms of the scope of the height, it is not that off from what it is across the street at Colony House, but it is...
On that side of the street, yes.
It's across the street from Biravino now.
I'm sorry, can I make just a couple of comments in response to some of your comments?
Raise it into the mic, please.
Sorry. Maybe you had misinterpreted a few things that I said, when I said, when I was talking about massing, I was talking about the design standards are in there specifically to break down the massing so that it isn't as massive. And also, we do require a five-foot sidewalk minimum to surround the entirety of the site, and a four-foot strip for street trees to be in between the street and the sidewalk around the entire site as well. That is required specifically by the plan. And that could be either within the right-of-way or on the property, and then beyond that, beyond the right-of-way, which usually would be beyond this four-foot planting strip and the sidewalk, would be where the nine feet back goes. So from the curb of the street to the building would be 18 feet essentially, could be 18 feet. And that, that's what's already in this plan.
Okay. Well, I didn't see the, I didn't see the planning strip, but, okay, great.
So... Number five of the Landscape and Fence Design Standards, on page 13, I had to hold that up to make sure it was in there. I'm sorry, continue.
Yeah, no, and so I think I've said everything I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell truth, what's your best?
I do. William Brooks.
This one seems to be working.
Well, I think, I think everyone has heard that the density is too much. Can I ask you how you came up with that number?
What we are looking to do with increasing the density is in part, not to get too much into this, but the borough has a deficit of affordable housing, and in order to try and make up some of that number, you need to permit some housing to be built in order for an inclusionary development to include a certain amount. And not that this one or however many projects could potentially be built here would satisfy your requirement on their own. The more you permit, the more housing you can get, the closer you get to compliance with whatever the settlement agreement is going to be. So there was a very concerted effort to increase the density in the hopes of getting more affordable housing units.
I doubt seriously if the town was looking at a four-fold increase over what's presently there. Like, it's 16, and then if you take all of your other little perks to get them, which I know probably won't happen, you're getting way, way up in the density for this project. And I believe you said 97% impervious coverage on the lot?
Seventy-seven percent.
Seventy-seven building coverage. Impervious lot coverage, I believe, I heard 97%.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent. I'm not quite sure what's allowed, but I will put out, point out the proximity to the river and runoff issues. I'm not sure that's a good idea for starters, right there. I think that's something you have to take into effect. Your four-foot planting strip for green grass and trees, yes, that will help, but your density is, in my opinion, really overloaded, and we also know we have infrastructure problems in this town in terms of water and sewer. You throw a four-fold over what is presently allowed there onto that system, you're asking for trouble.
I can comment on the density. Current density is permitted by zoning ordinance on this site, 16 units an acre. One of the things we looked at in determining this density and upping it was, you go right across the street to some of the mid-rises there, with Colony Homes, if you take just their site and the amount of apartments they have there, they're at about 60 units an acre. So we're certainly going a little bit above that, and what I said, we're upping the density a little bit. I was referencing towards the current existing conditions on some other properties in the area, and it certainly is, it is three or four times as much as is currently permitted by something, yes.
Correct, and I'm not sure that that piece of property is zoned the same as where the apartments, the high-rise apartments are in town.
It's in the same zone.
It is in the same zone.
It's all in the waterfront development zone.
Okay, fair enough.
And frankly, I mean, you're not going to be able to have anybody in their right mind be able to build 16 units an acre on the waterfront.
I understand.
It's not going to happen.
I understand that, but I'm not sure 64.
No, no, I understand your point, yeah, but I didn't think, the rationale is not what is permitted by what the ordinance says, but what is in fact existing, and that's what he was saying. You know, if you go to Riverview Towers, I don't know what the density is there, but I'm sure it's more than 60 per units, and that's right down the street, it's probably closer to 90 per unit because that's 15 stories high. We're not talking about 15 stories.
Fair enough. But I won't stress that, I think impervious lot coverage way high, way too high. I'm just looking for trouble with that, in my opinion.
I don't, I don't disagree, but I will also point out that this is not approving any particular development at this time. Any developer who would come in would have to go through the site plan approval and would have to deal with stormwater management under the current standards of your stormwater ordinance.
I understand that, but if his guideline is 90% impervious lot coverage, to the point the mayor just made, they're going to go right to the edge, and then they're going to have to back up. Far more logical would be to restrict it a little bit ahead of time so we get a more compatible building in the area that addresses all of the concerns that are going to come forward, infrastructure density, everything else, as well as dealing with the river, because I imagine our friends at D E P will be looking at this very hard.
I think D E P would, would, obviously, we, everybody knows that, but I think that, you know, unlike, unlike the project across the street that is neutral, I, I think this has a good shot in terms of having a thorough D E P review and a considered review. The problem is not D E P, I think the problem is DOT.
I think they're both going to be a problem there, and I agree with you in ranking DOT first for traffic study. I may go near that, that's already covered, that's a nightmare. I just was curious as to how you got to density, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else in the public have any comments or questions? Do you have anything else?
One other thing I would just like to add or sort of reiterate, the original thought behind the density bonuses, and I'll admit some of them were a little bit of softballs that I had to put in there, they were all softballs. Just so for effect. And that's a kind word. The thought behind that was, and I can certainly go back and consider strengthening them or just get rid of them entirely if you want, but the idea was, in order to actually attract a developer to build something and provide the affordable housing and do something that would be an attractive gateway into the borough, would require a lot of density to do that, because that's what the developers care about, is how many units they can build, and how expensive it is going to be for them to do that. And the more you require of a developer, the more expensive it gets, the less likely it is to happen. So the thought was there is to do a little bit of a carrot and less stick to try and get them to do some of the things you might want, and the way you can sort of encourage them to do the things you want to see is allowing additional density. But if...
Seventy units an acre is a pretty big cap.
Right on the water.
I don't think anybody wants to see more than that there, so if they want density bonuses, let them come ask at the site plan. I don't think they should be...
They would not be able to do that at, at Site Plan, if they exceed density, that would be, they'd have to come back, they'd go back to the city council or to the borough council and have to get the plan amended, so that would be a D barriers.
From my standpoint, I'm okay with that. If anyone else on the board has any comments about it, they're welcome to chime in. What's next, Mike, what do we need to do here?
I don't know, that's a question, where's the board working? Well, I think you've heard a lot tonight, if you're first one down to this closing of all the property.
That is true, is there anyone else that has a comment or a question from the public? Because we will normally close this portion of the meeting. So make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting. All in favor? Any opposed or abstained?
I think, yeah, I think that this is, I mean, most of the board members have received a plan, which I know the council has, a 25-page plan, which is rather comprehensive in scope and nature. We've heard from the planner this evening, we've heard from interested members in the public. I think we should digest the comments a little bit more and read it more thoroughly with the plan, and not make immediate recommendations, but carry for our next meeting, for the discussion. It's just a lot for us to digest, and I noted Ms. Honda is here, and she's our court of housing attorney, but I don't know if we have any questions for her, because I think the plan was already addressed it in terms of this is part of our formal housing obligation and unmet needs, so that's what we're, we're dealing with. So I submit, we don't take any formal action on this tonight, but carry for our next meeting, because I really think everybody should read the plan thoroughly, and let's have an articulated discussion.
I'll buy lunch for anyone who can find where I wrote this note, and it's right here, it says irrigation for plantings, see? I have no idea where I came up with that.
That is a note for your house.
I searched the words irrigation and plantings, and they don't show up in the document, so my apologies on that.
Are we requesting any changes to this document?
You can do that in the next meeting, we can, we can think about this.
But when he calls back, will we have to change it, or are we going to discuss it?
No, no, first of all, we don't change the document, we make recommendations that the council...
I know, we...
He doesn't either. This is a, this is a document that referred to this report. So the document that you have before you is the document that you approved on the council.
This has been introduced, hasn't it?
So we can't change that document, we can make comments and recommendations that the council...
This has been introduced.
It has been introduced.
So it's under the 35-day approval.
Yeah, but I don't think anybody's going to challenge that.
Well, that's the question, if the council can, but the council has known the whole of it, so we talk about this. We're hopeful it happens. What do you guys want to do?
I like your suggestion, I think this is an important proposal, I think we should take an extra couple of weeks to talk about it. Think about it, come up with our recommendation to come back and discuss it further. This is not a small, this is not a small obligation for the board.
But I think we should convince the governing body that we are delivering. That's what I'm suggesting.
Well, Glenn is here, he'll look at it, unless Glenn, you sit there. Well, the second reading at the councils, you gotta come up, Glenn. He couldn't, he couldn't stay away. The second reading for the councils, November 7th, our next meeting's November 5th.
Oh, okay.
I think that's...
So it's not a problem?
No, I didn't think so, no. And I just think that it takes, you know, we really should take a look back closely, you've heard a lot tonight, and you've heard some good comments, but I really think you should give it some more serious consideration.
I'm generally concerned about the fifth.
I am.
We're all concerned.
See, I think you just carried to the fifth. Okay. Do we motion to carry this to the November 5th meeting? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So to the public, there'll be no further notice, this is your notice, that this issue is being carried to the November 5th meeting, there won't be anything else in the newspaper about it, so if you're interested in this, please come back on November 5th. We have a couple more things, we have the resolution approving the estate of Elizabeth 1361 William Street.
You should have the form here, the other condition, wherever we want to have to try to preserve the trees on the eastern line, and we moved the lot, we moved the dividing line over to the 40-foot by the lot. Other issues we did have.
Motion? Anyone? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Thomas Welsh, Councilman Ballard, DM Encuso, Hazem Yassen, and Dana Casson.
Yes. And we have an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter 409 relating to commercial recreational uses.
This, if you could, briefly, this was requested by the borough council at a prior meeting, and this, there's certain types of uses in town, like...
Get closer to my place.
You've seen a lot of these DIY places yourself that have opened up recently, things like the skate room, and things like the arcade place on the West Street. This specifically, and from a zoning perspective, it's always been a little difficult to fit these into our existing criteria. Some people have an interpreted, maybe it's permitted, some is not permitted, and so it creates a lot of uncertainty in the community to open these places. So this would be specifically, specifically to make these type of uses.
I'll make a motion to recommend this to the mayor and council. Let's do all, let's do all together, let's do the green, the green development checklist.
The next thing from our environmental commission, and that's including the development checklist, and that would relate to what you learned tonight, that wouldn't require for your first application, would require for your second. It's not a requirement that you comply, it's a requirement that you inform about what you provide.
I'll make a motion to accept that for the amendment to the recommendation of the mayor and council as well.
Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Thomas Welsh?
Yes.
Councilman Ballard?
Yes.
DM Encuso?
Yes.
Gorgo Boas? Yes. Hazem Yassen? Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we also have the minutes of September 17th, I'll make a motion to approve those. All in favor? Abstentions. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the public, thank you so much for coming, it's always nice when people come out to the meeting.